By chance, no commissioners?
I didn't know, and so we'll work on those communications.
Very good. All right, it is four oh eight. We will open this March tenth meeting of the Lake County Planning Commission. Call it to order. Roll call. Heather Lind. Steve Stevens. I saw him on there.
We see you, Steve. All right.
Hi, Steve. David Clark-Berl. I thought I saw him earlier. Jason Marufo.
Here.
Ryan Hill.
Here.
Thank you. And David Jurich.
Here. Hey, Joey, this is Steve. Can you hear me now?
I can now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and Joey Edwards as acting commissioner today, acting chair is here. Lake County Commissioners are absent, but Elsa Tharp, Andrew Lee, Matt Bullock, not present today. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
We do have a slight change to the agenda. Seeing as how today we had scheduled and noticed for a public hearing on our sign code, we are asking if we could get a motion to table that until a date certain of March twenty fourth. We are also, so we would be asking for consideration by the Planning Commission of two motions. One, to move a continuation of the public hearing until March twenty fourth. The other would be direction by the Planning Commission to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners an extension of the sign moratorium to allow us adequate time. The sign moratorium is expiring, and so we do need some additional time since we do not have a quorum of the Board of County Commissioners with us this evening to hear the public hearing for the sign code.
Is there a date we want to put the extension of the sign moratorium to?
I would say if we could get an additional, we'll probably recommend thirty to forty-five day extension of the moratorium just to ensure we would not have to do this since we have already extended the moratorium once. We probably would ask for some additional time to just avoid not having to do this in the future.
And the moratorium currently in place ends when?
The moratorium that's currently in place, I think it's July-
March seventeenth.
From March seventeenth.
So, that doesn't sound right, because that's next Monday. I think it's next Thursday.
Yeah.
This thing was March nineteenth.
Yeah, the nineteenth is correct.
March nineteenth, thank you.
March nineteenth, and the only other thing that I would ask, if it would be all right, if the chair would consider it, Melissa, if there was anything else, I know this is a surprise to you, but we have consulted with the county attorney's office, and we would recommend this as our best measure to extend the moratorium to allow our public hearing with a form of the Board of County Commissioners present.
Two motions, see if you can leave my hand ready.
Do you have any other thoughts or consideration that you'd like the Planning Commission to consider?
Two separate?
No.
So one, and I'll call it, and then the second, and I'll call it.
I think we've had three study sessions, so I think they're pretty aware. It might give us a little bit more time to get that final legal review on a particular paragraph I wanted. So it might modify the conditions that are, you know, before them tonight, but they're not considering them, so we'll work in that direction.
Very good. So it might also just benefit the policy to allow a little extra time. So maybe it's best outcome, but those would be what we would be asking this evening. And that would modify the agenda by removing that from the public hearing that we had scheduled for this evening.
Is there any reason not to go ahead and make both motions now?
I think it would be just fine to go ahead and make those motions.
All right, I would call for the first motion.
I move to for a continuation to March twenty fourth of the public hearing for the sign code.
Sign code hearing.
Sign code hearing.
May I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes, and I'd ask for the second motion, please.
I move to have an extension of the sign moratorium, a forty-five day extension from March nineteenth.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Both motions carry. All right. Anyone have any changes to the minutes from our February twenty fourth meeting? Changes or additions? If there are none, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty fourth.
I move to approve the minutes from February twenty fourth.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? We will move on to updates from the staff.
Very good, thank you so much. Updates that we have for you, our next meeting on the twenty fourth will be a rezon application and a site plan review of construction within the scenic conservation overlay. So in addition to the public hearing on the sign code, just be prepared for our next meeting to be just a little bit longer because we will have three different public hearings for you. So that'll be a public hearing on each. And then in April, Melissa, I'll let you actually update the application that you have coming in April. Recently went to, and intended staff went to the Building Code Conference and to the Rocky Mountain Land Use Conference, both really great opportunities for professional development and networking for staff. Lots of good conversations around the legislative changes that are happening and occurring. Some of them we have been insulated from because we don't hit the thresholds for mandatory regulation. However, there are some good lessons that we are possibly learning from the application of those regulations. Specifically, what I think that you'll be seeing from staff is a recommendation to take our accessory dwelling unit use as an administrative use by right in the zone districts that we allow it in. Through the zoning review, we can ensure that the standards have been adhered to. But largely, our recommendation would be that having accessory dwelling units that are situated on parcels under an acre to being required to have a conditional use permit may be overly regulatory and may not serve us well as we continue to have goals around creating different and diverse housing opportunities for our community. So that is one area that we might look to kind of follow. In the state, there's a lot of discussion around parking minimum requirements. I think we already kind of looked at that. We have less of an issue in corporate areas about parking requirements. And then I think overall, it was just, it's some really great networking, found some different resources that I know Melissa and I both will be calling on from time to time on some different things that are happening. Another item that I talked about with you previously that will be coming up on a work session discussion, probably as soon as we can get through our three public hearings on March twenty fourth, will probably be the first meeting in April. We'd like to revisit some of the wording of the standards associated with backcountry zoning. There currently is a standard in there that says no fuel-fired equipment except, I think it's portable cooking, or portable cooking stoves with removable, like little propane tanks. It's come to our attention that there may be some new backcountry equipment that may have some fuel, gas-fired backcountry appliances that we might want to consider in the backcountry. That's kind of one of the areas. Also, just looking in reviewing our code of different places that we can streamline some of our processes. And so we'll be talking on work sessions probably the first part of April just about some things that we've identified in the code that we think could become either, you know, maybe we need clarification from the Planning Commission and the board for direction or areas that we think that maybe we could streamline some processes. And Cece or Melissa, do either of you have updates for the, Melissa, if you want to go first, maybe with your update for April?
Yeah, so we do have a public hearing scheduled for April twenty eighth. This is the Box Creek Titan Conditional Use Permit that relates to gravel mining where the historic gold mining has occurred. So we have been working with the applicant and some consultants to make sure that we understand the technical issues related to the impact. So I think we're getting ready to draft that staff report, and that'll come to you in April. I think that would be it, and did a nice job with a summary of the Rocky Mountain Land Use Institute, but that was a good conference.
One other thing from the conferences before, another session that I sat in, I think really speaks directly to our manufactured home communities. And so we'd really like to start talking to you. We did talk about this some time ago. They all are located within the business zone district. And maybe it's really time to identify these are naturally occurring affordable housing areas within the county. And maybe they should be within a zoning that is more protective of that housing stock and how important it is to our community. So, and we also have some challenges that all of our parks predate our zoning code and are non-conforming. And so there's been examples in Denver how they had that same exact situation and how they have found a way to work with those parks to preserve and also provide for better outcomes in replacing or adding units within those different communities. So that's another really timely, I think, discussion that we're going to want to have.
That would be great, yeah.
Of how do we, how do we protect those areas and is there even potential for maybe expanding housing within those areas safely and beneficial for our community? Do you have any updates? Okay. Great, we still have short-term rental licenses available?
Yeah, how many licenses do we have?
Same as last time.
Wow.
However, many that was.
I think it was thirteen, thirteen.
It's in the teens.
Yeah, I missed there were a few, yeah. That's good.
Okay, I think that's our updates.
Very good. Full business. Then we will move on to tonight's discussion of file number twenty-four dash thirty-nine, sign code amendment.
So that is the one that we have asked for continuation on?
Oh, we're not going to have even a discussion on it?
I don't, unless, Melissa, there's any, we weren't going to open the file for, tonight except for public hearing. So unless you would like to open up the file for discussion since it is, we couldn't take any other comments from the materials that have been sent over, but I think what we were prepared is just to go ahead and hold off on actually opening up for public hearing. So if there's any comment, we could take that.
Nope, I was only, I thought maybe we were going to have a quick refresher, but that's fine if we're not. Then this is a very easy move, meeting. We will move on to Mr. Yurman's presentation.
Okay, thanks, everybody. My name is Michael Yurman. I have been assisting the county with housing, what, since twenty twenty-two now? And so I was asked to give a quick presentation on some Housing 101, capital stacking, private-public partnership in development process. The real focus is on private-public partnerships, but there are two, obviously, there's a cadence of when that occurs in a development process as well as some really important things around just like what is a capital stack and why would you help a developer out? Development pays some way, right? So around affordable housing, so next slide, please. So capital stack is basically the layering of funds to make a development whole. And in affordable housing, the big issue is that to get to that affordable house price or that affordable house rent, the capital stack doesn't add up to a hundred percent, right? There's a gap, and that's what we call the affordability gap, which I'll get into if you jump to the next slide. But really, the important thing is that capital stack for investments has to make it profitable for a developer to want to come in and do something. So the easiest way to be thinking about capital stacks is your own mortgage if you have one. It's like, you know, basically your capital stack is your equity, your debt service, any additional funds that you got from family or friends, a family loan that equals your mortgage, right? And that all week, you know, the bank made sure that equals a hundred percent when they loaned you the money. They can't, you know, your debt service can't be higher than the price of the house, otherwise they won't give you a loan. Again, this is what a normal capital stack looks like when you go to buy a house. The issue is that in affordable housing, that thirty percent or more of your income going to housing costs, including utilities, is when you start to become housing insecure. And so the, you know, all the grant funding and everything else we've been looking at to try to make affordable housing targets that final price, whether it's rent or that for sale price, to be less than thirty percent. So the question becomes, you know, how does local government partner with developers and private-public partnerships to make this affordability gap happen? Next slide. So again, you know, this is just, this is, as if you guys heard the term LITC, low-income housing tax credit. So that, those are kind of the national standard of affordable housing. That is a rental project that is subsidized by tax credit equity. It brings a large source of additional funding. You can see here, like, normally the rent income would make up that last little bit of the debt service. And a LITC project because the AMIs are sixty percent or less in that project. There's a huge gap of rental income that's missing for the developer. So that's made up for in the form of a tax credit equity that goes into their project. And again, there's these, so what I want to focus on, and even in those types of projects, is that last little chunk, that last fifteen, ten percent that all those developers are always missing, which is the gap funding sources. And so that's really where the private-public partnership comes in. So next slide. So what is, what is that gap source funding, right? And how do we get there? So there's a bunch of different ways that gap funding can occur. Land is, and owner equity is probably the easiest. I think that's the lowest hanging fruit. If you have a publicly available parcel, if you can take out land costs out of the equation for the development, you're going to, I mean, as you probably know, what a lot in town goes for these days is what a house used to go for probably twenty years ago. Just the land now is the value. So being able to take out land costs, there are grants, and I'll get into the nuances around grants. But grants, what we have to keep in mind is that local governments are allowed to get the grant. A private developer, there's very few grants that actually go to private developers. So developer can't come in and say, hey, I'm doing affordable housing, I'm going to go to the state. They actually have to have a local, sorry, the local government be the applicant for them. And so there's ways to do that. Soft debt is another great example of like taking on low-interest loans through CHAFAM. Local government contributions, fee waivers, tax credits, which are its own kind of like, I guess, that's housing 501. So we're not going to get into that, but the tax credit deals and how they're financed through that, those programs. CHAFAM, just the most important thing to understand as a commissioner is that CHAFAM, the Colorado Housing Finance Authority, is the administrator of tax credits for the entire state. And so all tax credit projects apply to CHAFAM. And the most important thing for the Planning Commission to understand is that a project will never, because that program is super, super competitive, will never, ever even have a chance to stand up on its own in front of CHAFAM unless it has fully entitled, all of its entitlements buttoned up with the Planning Commission and the B O C C. So if you ever see a LITC project, the biggest and most important step that developer can get, and it's only, they only accept applications, I think it's February first. Is it February first?
It's February something.
February something, but there's only one round a year, and less than fifty percent of the projects get funded. So super competitive. Also, rural projects are very, very hard to do. I would say eighty percent of tax credit funding goes to the front range. So when we do have a project in a rural area, making sure all the i's and t's are dotted. The only other thing I'll say on tax credits is that typically if you do see a tax credit deal come in front of you, you're dealing with a very sophisticated developer. Really, only developers who have done previous tax credits will actually meet the footholds, and they have to perform. If they ever mess up, they're kind of blacklisted. So, not kind of blacklisted, it's a blacklisted. So you, so you'll see that when those projects come, there's a lot of sensitivities around the entitlement process and ensuring everything is really in order before that February deadline. And they normally give themselves a six-month runway, so they're not pushed up against the entitlement deadline. And then finally, debt service is, obviously, every project that does this has some kind of debt. There's very few, like, Howard-Tatford, you know, might be one of the only places that I've ever seen a project that, you know, that the nonprofit comes in and pays for the project and then sells to an owner. But almost all projects have that final loan, which gets into like, all this has to add up into something that I've banked or financed. Again, we already talked about this, but the official definition from CHAFAM, just, I'm just going to read it. But the affordability gap means the difference between the cost of construction, constructing a housing unit based on fair market value versus the cost of a low-income person could afford for a housing unit. So that's the official state definition, so whenever you might see that. Next slide. All right, so here's the real question, and this is why I'm here, right? And this is, this is kind of, I'm like a niche planner because this is what I do. I help these projects achieve this exact thing. Is how do we close affordability gap to make the project? So again, your rental or your home price has to be greater than the final debt service. So here's where public-private partnerships come in play. It's when really is, and I'll get into like the three phases here in a minute, the grants where local governments are most successful with helping development are either in land banking or in horizontal construction of infrastructure, so roads, sewer, water, electric, gas. That's where the local government can have the most input. And I hate to say this, but I always say this, local governments should never be in the vertical construction business because they suck at building houses. They're good, I mean, you know, most local governments have a water department, have a roads department, have a streets department. You have, that's your expertise, right? Building houses by committee, you want to hire a developer to do it. So I always tell my local governments, don't get into the construction business, get into the horizontal. But that's also where a lot of funding is available. And the other piece of the puzzle is that the developer typically, again, dedicates back a road to the local government to maintain, or dedicates back to, for your, in your instance, you have water and wastewater districts. But long-term maintenance is on those districts. So that's why the state comes in and provides that funding is because there is a local government enterprise fund that is responsible for that infrastructure law. The other two things are development incentives, which are a little bit different than like fee waivers, which is the bottom line. Development incentives are density bonuses or other kind of incentives to make the unit counts a little bit higher so that the pro forma balances. So if you have, if you get four extra units because you're hitting certain AMIs, you're able to bring in four extra units of either home sales or four extra units of rental income, that might be the difference between making a project work or not. And then finally, classic fee waivers do go a long way. And actually, those fee waivers, again, when it comes to the vertical piece of the puzzle, tap fees and building permit fees, that's when a local government can really take a project from being semi-competitive to very competitive because that's always like the last little bit that gets this project for that project over the top. Next one? All right, so where does your authority as a planning commissioner of B O C C apply in actually doing this, right? Like, can you actually partner with a private developer for your code and actually do exactly what I'm talking about? And the answer is yes. We looked at a P U D amendment, when was this, in twenty twenty-three? Yeah, it was when I was doing the qualified strategies. So six, one, two, section I. There are five standards in which the Planning Commission and the B O C C can consider entering into a public-private partnership. I'm not going to read the five reasons, but you guys can look at those. But they're all basically some type of commitment to affordable housing. But the key point on this is that the time for the ask occurs on sketch plan. So that, that list of like, what are we orchestrating, is sketch plan is the time to do that. Once you get into the development agreement phases, that's when the rubber really hits the road. But the expectations should be set way in advance so you know why you're giving either a density bonus or some type of fee waiver or going after some type of grant. Those discussions need to happen on the very front of the project.
So at the sketch plan, everybody's aware that this is an affordable housing project?
Yeah, there should be blinking lights, like, hey, this person's getting, this person's coming in, and they should, and and I won't get into what things to be paying attention to as planning commissioners of why you, like, what is the actual trade-offs here in just a couple of slides, so. Any other questions on this, though? This is your authority.
Makes sense.
Okay. Next slide. So other, these are some other incentives that kind of are on the backend of the grants we've already talked about. But these are kind of on the permanent debt side of the equation, so once the developer has it conscripted. But there's something called a special limited partnership. And we do have a regional housing authority here, which is Lake County and the city of Leipold. So there is a special limited partnership statute that allows the property tax deferral over the life of the affordability. So that actually goes a long way, especially if you think about the size and scale of a thirty-unit or fifty-unit or sixty-unit potential project. Those long-term property tax deferrals are a really big piece. And normally, that partnership is a negotiation, is not something that the the Planning Commission would be sinking their teeth into, but is definitely something, as you know, property taxes go into the maintenance of streets and pay for services in your community. So, you know, school district and everyone else would be keenly interested in why they're not going to be getting getting this money for this project for thirty years. So normally, where the housing authority comes in, because they only, they're only taking a very small percentage of the ownership of the project to do this, normally, the negotiation is the housing authority getting first right of refusal on the de-restriction. So those tax credit projects that I've been talking about have, the affordability mechanism has a lifespan of thirty years. So at the end of thirty years, what happens, right? This project just become free market. Normally, under the negotiation with the housing authority, especially up in the resort communities, that, and especially if you're putting in things like land or any kind of additional grant funding, you're asking for, on the backend, first right of refusal. You're saying after the developer is done and they've made their money and the tax credit deal, and they're stepping aside, the county can come in and, or the regional housing authority can come in and take over the project and continue to make it, continue to support it. TIPS or other special districts, there's a bunch of them, depending on where you're at. The Royal Rovers is a good, right, the Royal Rovers is a tip, is an example of property taxes. So you set a value of the property tax, and then as that property tax pool increases on that district, those realized property taxes above and beyond what they originally were go back into improving that. Again, that is, that's not typically a funding stream for affordable housing that is done in rural areas. It does work in downtown urban environments where there's a lot more kind of street maintenance and bigger expenses around a project like that. So it's less of something you can see, and again, we've talked about grants, but what I really want to hammer on is that I hear all the time, like, oh, we're just going to write a grant. And this grant's going to be great, everyone's going to love it, like rainbows and unicorns. That's not the case. There's no such thing as free money. Those grants come with, Jackie's cigarette. There's definitely no such thing as free money. So the biggest thing to be aware of is what is the grant requiring? And a perfect example is that the housing guidelines allow AMIs up to what, two-hundred percent AMI? We got a grant for the housing at ten to a hundred project that's going on in the city. The state said, nope, we don't care about your housing guidelines. The state said, nope, we don't care about your housing guidelines, your max AMI is 140%. And so we had to explain to the commissioners, like, why are we not using our own guidelines? It's like, well, because you took money, now you're playing by their guidelines. So, I always hammer home that, like, the grant or the free money that you think you're getting, know what you're getting in exchange, because that funder, again, what they care about is long-term affordability and how they are improving the affordability gap to get down to lower AMIs, that is their mission. A lot of state agencies' mission is between, is, well, they've raised it to 100%, but like, the Colorado Health Foundation, for instance, who's got in the housing game, they want 80% or below, or Elevation Conservation Land Trust, they want 80%. Shavey Housing Trust, they're at 80% or below. So a lot of them are going for even slower AMIs and even 100%. Next slide. Okay, so I'm gonna, this is, I'm gonna fly through this piece, but I think it's really important, and this is, the message here is, when you think about a housing project, don't eat the elephant all at once. Like, I get so many, so many local governments that go into a housing project, and they're already like, wanting to know what the site in detail is going to be, and we don't even have the sewer main in, right? You really need to break down the project into the three phases. And the pre-development phase is actually the number one thing local governments need to be laser-focused on. The vertical construction, I'll talk about here in a second. If you hire a good builder, you should be a cake block. You should have a really nice contract, and if the builder ever violates the contract, you take it out of the folder and you say, uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh. But you should never have to take that contract down, because if you hire a good builder. And then the final piece, which is a project completion and operation, that's actually where local government or a housing authority comes back in. So, let's jump to pre-development. So, pre-development, these are all the things that have to go into a housing project before even most granters will even begin to consider your grant requests. And this is really where local governments need to really roll their sleeves and help. So, site selection, again, if there's a publicly owned asset, land banking, there are grants that if it's a private asset, you can go and purchase it. And then, again, that land banker or funder is going to say the AMIs are going to be this forever on that piece of land, or for 30 years on that piece of land. As you probably all know, you look at surveys all the time. Surveying is very expensive, especially if you have some entitlement issues that go into that survey. Up here, environmental factors, a phase one, a phase two remediation. Those, all those types of things need to be dealt with, like we did on housing at 10 to 20. The other big, big one, and luckily Jackie just completed, is a market feasibility study. You need to know your market to actually, who you're building for. No funder is going to give anybody any money unless you can show that the need is there. And in fact, on that light tech project that I was talking about, that has to be completely leased up in three months when the doors open. There's no exception. So, you can't say, like, say the housing needs at what, 160 was the need under 60% AMI, it was 160 units. No funder's going to say, yeah, go build the whole thing, we'll hope it's leased up. They're going to give you 25% of that demand, so they'll say, we'll let you build 40 of those units, because they have to be completely leased up day one. Infrastructure is a no-brainer, but that's, I can't stress enough, there's zero chance that the project's going to be affordable if you have a million-dollar water line that needs to go into it. You can't, you know, just do a million divided by however many units, and you're already screwed on your pricing, all right? But the one thing I will say in design, I am a stickler for design. A good design that's value-engineered really goes a long way when you select your developer, to say, hey, these are the designs we want, and these are what we're going to get on the backend to allow that. The other magical thing about all this is, all these costs, if you are helping and you're partnering with the private developer, they're considered match when you get to vertical construction. All right, I'll just say one last, I call this eating your broccoli. And I had a public works director way back when I was in Crestivut, he called it like, we were building a Nordic center, so it wasn't a housing, but we needed a sewer main extension for the Nordic center, because it was a two-inch line that was done in like, 1880, right? And he was like, Michael, no funder, you gotta think about this, no funder was going to put their name on a sewer main, right? Like, they all wanted to build this beautiful Nordic center, because they could have little tiles that say, you know, like, so is Mr. and Mrs. Smith's Nordic Center, right? But they, no one wants to look down and see their name on a sewer main, right? So this is why I'm saying, eat your broccoli as local government, because no funder is going to want to put their name on it. Except Dola, Dola loves broccoli. All right, next slide. So the vertical constructions side of all of this, this is really when you need to be leaning on the developer, and this is where the developer carries the risk, right? If the developer, if the entitlements are in place and the site's ready to go vertical, and the developer screws up, they're next in the news. They're the ones going out there to get the funding, and they screwed up. I hate to say it like that, but if they are going up and they underestimated a construction cost or something like that, it's on them, right? You've taken care of the entitlements, you've zoned the property, they got a building permit in hand, they go out there and their drywall costs go up 300%, it's your fault, right? They should have done their due diligence. But that's, to a developer, the most important thing that local governments need to understand is time is everything. Timelines matter, having like, having a two-week delay because of an inspection, something like that. The other thing that I always say, change orders will kill you, so, no change orders. I always tell my local governments, like, don't, do not think that we're going to all of a sudden add solar panels at the end of a project, or like, heat pumps or geothermal now, like, no. If it wasn't talked about when we went after the funding, it's not going to be in the project, no. Or you want a playground with it? No, it's not in there, it's not in the pro forma, so no. And then the other really big, important one that I preach to my local governments is, talk to the building and fire departments early. I always see a slight disconnect between building and fire with the planning departments. You guys, I don't think, have that here, because you guys are well-integrated. But that's a really important thing, especially when it comes to like sprinkler codes or the IFC on multifamily. Next slide. This is, this is just an estimate, I don't think I'm going to get into this, but this is kind of a breakout of each of the phases of a rush construction and the costs of what goes into the overall budget, we can skip this. So, the last one, this is the permanent debt financing of a project. This, again, is where local governments really need to be involved. Down payment assistance programs or the permanent debt service through a low-interest loan, bonding on a project through the regional housing authority, all those types of things really drastically reduce the final cost to buyers. So knowing your market, knowing that it's going to lease up, having talked to the final debt services, USCIA. You know, the biggest one that I always scream and shout about, and I jump up and down in the room, is VA. Like, there's nothing more frustrating to me than writing a de-restriction that the VA rejects, and it's like, telling them that they can't get a VA loan. It's like, you gotta just do your own, do damn due diligence, I'm sorry to say it like that. But you gotta make sure that those folks who qualify for those types of products, who gave their life on the line, can actually, you can actually do that. So, I've seen more local governments get in the way of something like that, and they're not helpful, right? Like, you should be getting those folks into the housing programs that they're entitled to. Next slide. So this is where the rubber really meets the rubber. And so, I want to share this with you, and this is where I think there's a little sticker shock, of when you're negotiating AMIs. So, area median income is what everyone, I've thrown it out there probably 10 times without explaining it. That's, area median income is basically 100%, is, one person is 66.9. The issue right now, so previously, when I was in Crestivut, the problem was that these numbers were so low that, like, my park employees couldn't qualify for the housing. Now, they've crept so high that you can see that the translation of the numbers based on affordability are starting to get scary. So, what's important for the planning commission to understand is, when someone says, hey, I'm building you a project for 100% AMI rentals, it's like, oh, really? What's the rent going to be? Because this is the state mandated rents, these are the maximum rents. And you can look right now, a family of three for a three-bedroom house at 100% is $24.88. Is that really what you guys were thinking you were going to get when you negotiated with a developer? So that's, that's part of when you're talking at Sketch Plan and understanding your AMIs, to just know what that developer's pro forma is plugging in for rental rates. Because I've seen local governments get to the, you know, go in the groundbreaking with the gold shovels and super excited, and then they like, you know, CO is issued, and all of a sudden the lease, for lease comes up, and they see that rental rate, and they're like, we never agreed to this. You're like, you did, you did. So, that's the other thing, is knowing your market area and market study. Where you have, as local governments, and this is going back to the private-public partnership and why you negotiate this at Sketch Plan, where you have the most leverage is at the beginning of the process, to say, hey, we would like the service up to 100% AMI, but we expect the rental rates to be at 80, Mr. Developer. And if we're going to give you land, or we're going to give you tap fee deferrals, we're going to give you this, or we're going to give you that, we want this in exchange. And that's why you do it at Sketch Plan, so everyone's on the same page, because you can imagine that 30 units at an 80% AMI rental rate versus in a budget for a developer, I mean, the difference is, you know, a huge jump. Four hundred dollars a month, 400 times 30 starts to make a real difference, times 12, is a huge amount of money. So, my point being is, AMIs, really understand what you're getting. And if you're in a public hearing and you have a question, raise your hand. Say, what does 100% AMI really mean? That's what's important. Next slide. All right, so, how to build a successful capital stack? Again, go to your funder's last, I always say this, like, the worst thing that I see is on public-private partnerships is, the funders, everyone goes to the funders and say, can you build our project for us? And the funders don't do that. The funders like to know that you've done your due diligence, they want to know what the gap is. So, don't go, like, the planning commission doesn't have to worry about this, but this is more of a, more of a just a no. Phase your debt, again, trying to eat the whole entire whale or elephant at the same time, just never was going to work. If you bust out pre-development fees and you buy down land costs, you buy down all the infrastructure, and that's not in your vertical construction costs, then it's actually an affordable housing project, right? Then it's $200, $225 per foot that you're actually passing on to the end user versus the additional land cost, tap fees, everything else. That's how you get to that. Know your market and your pro forma. Again, lease up and pre-sales, reduce risk significantly. And let me just tell you something, there's no such thing as spec housing for affordable housing. There's nobody out there building spec affordable houses, right? Like, we just did a lottery, we have pre-qualified folks that are already lined up. Any bank that's going to want to see that, that's going to want to see the buyer pool waiting for the housing units on the backend. They don't have the ability to hang on to a unit and allow it to appreciate like a free market developer does. But again, flexible and nimble, your funders are going to dictate a lot of things, so don't come in predetermined. And that's really important for the planning commission to hear, is like, if a developer comes back to you and says, hey, I know I promised this, but my, now my funder is telling me I gotta do this, that's really important to understand, like, they don't have control over the state funders. And so if a state funder says they gotta do X, Y, and Z, and they come back in and say, then that's probably why they're back in front of you, right? And again, you're going to have to comply with this, because those funders, they'll be putting on their own de-restrictions, their own requirements. Next slide. I know this was a lot, these two are the, beyond, if you're interested in this, these two, the CHAFA Developers Guide and the Dola Affordable Housing Kit for Local Officials, these are the two best resources at the state level, they're really great. I would encourage you to click around on them for 10 minutes. There's certain things, like, I mean, you probably know a lot of what's on there, but there's always like a term or something that I talked about that we might want to, so we can certainly make this available to the planning commission as a resource.
Give a little forward, Michael's slide deck.
Thank you.
To everyone, so that you can look back through it and you have access to the resources.
All right, and any questions for me?
Where do we stand on what we're doing right now?
You're, well, so, we have quite a few projects underway. The housing 200 project, we had an issue with the first builder on construction financing. He didn't know his market, that's a classic one, and we kind of got to the discussions where we were actually meeting with his lender, and we pulled the plug because there was too much risk. And we now have a solution builder to equip homes, who actually don't require construction financing, who are currently working on repricing the units to make that project more affordable. There's some other projects, like the Harrison Master Plan, that is kind of actually, kind of pumped the brakes on that to allow the comp plan discussion with you guys to play out a little bit more, to really set the high-level rules around housing, especially with three new BSCC members. But that's a great example of a potential project, I'm not saying that it should or shouldn't, but there's an example where the county owns a land asset, and you don't have to pay for that. And because the county owns it, it's eligible for infrastructure dollars. So, those are the types of projects that we actually spent, we spent three years studying a lot of publicly owned assets, and so there's a bunch of studies out there that you guys probably even share around the different sites that we looked at. But again, the housing at 10 to 100 is a perfect example of a school district, a hospital parcel that we identified, and because they were publicly owned, we were able to leverage those assets.
Thanks.
Any questions online?
No.
I have a question for you, Michael. What kind of risk does a local government, in applying for the grants, some of the grants, like in acquiring land, if, you know, and then with the thought of going in to finding the right development partner? But if, let's say, that, how do you tie a developer to, is it, so it's with a special, are the limited special, I'm going to use that.
Special limited partnership.
Partnership agreements? Is that how you tie the developer to, especially if you've received money through a land banking grant, that you're responsible for that development coming to fruition?
So, my, so, my two cents on how I would approach a land banking exercise is actually, number one, the local government that is land banking the parcel should be doing a competitive RFP for the selection of the developer. So the difference is, what's really important is that normally, what you guys are used to, is a developer has a piece of property that they come to you, right? In this case, the local government is going out and getting the land. And when you do that, there's, just pay attention to your process of how you go about developer selection. And then the other thing, too, is, what is, and this is part of what the One Community process really needs to play out on, is, you're typically, when you're doing a, whenever, again, I'll use the Crestivut example, whenever we went out and land-banked a parcel or required an inclusionary zoning parcel, the local government got the asset first. And even, I can tell you, like, there's nothing worse to tell a developer, like, you have to donate a one-acre site, and no, you're not going to be the one I'm going to select to build it. They're like, what? And you're like, no, that's not the way this works. And so that's really kind of the tough negotiation piece of it, if you have inclusionary zoning or if you're going out and getting that piece. But it really, the important piece of, if you're going to go for a land with the CHAFA land banking grant, is that the BSCC and the budget appropriation process is realizing that this is a three-to-five-year process, and so where does this rank amongst all of the other projects we have? Because we're going to be out that money for the, for private. So, that's what they need to be understanding. And the other piece of the puzzle around all of this is, the local government has the most control if they own the asset. But I think where you see this desire is, and I'm, sorry, I'm only going to use this, I don't, because the railroad yards isn't in the county area, it's in the state. So I'm going to use the railroad yards as an example, sorry, I know there's something. But I've been in public meetings where folks have said, well, the railroad yards are supposed to be affordable housing, and I'm like, I don't think it was. And that's a classic example of, like, the free market situation, right? And when the railroad started, the housing prices and the housing market was here, and we've all seen what the housing market's done in five years, and people are looking around going, well, I thought these houses were supposed to be 300, and it's like, no, free market goes with the free market. And that's the difference of, like, yes, the railroad yards, they dedicated a site that's a And that's the difference of like, yes, in the rail yards, they dedicated a site that the Shifty Housing Trust, correct, is working on.
Right.
And that's your affordable housing piece of the, of the equation. So that's a perfect example of like, if a developer comes to you with a bigger piece of the, like a bigger project, that PUD standard of your authority, if actually you wanna go back to the PUDs to go up to, like, it was like slide five, maybe? Uh, sorry. More, here, here, sorry. This is again, a situation where a developer owns a piece of property. This allows a developer to say, hey, we want to come in and we're gonna donate maybe two acres of this 40 acres to the housing authority for some special consideration, right? That again is, like, the key is, is that they're going to be doing a land dedication, right? And then you're gonna be able to leverage that asset in all the ways that I just discussed. So those are kind of like considerations, but, so there's, I would just say this. You have two kind of scenarios. You have one where a private developer comes in with their own land and you're very limited as far as what you can negotiate. The other side of the puzzle is like the housing at 10-200 where the county owned the asset. We were able to dictate all the terms. And so that's, that's like, those are your, kind of your two pathways. And a land banking grant, like Anna's talking about, allows you to kind of control your own destiny a lot further than you will with a private developer.
Um, I think the other question I would have for you, Michael, and for Jackie is just, um, I don't think we can emphasize enough that there is no such thing as free money and really understanding what grants, what the grant parameters are, what the limitations are or what the criteria are, are really important. So if we find ourselves in a situation where we're considering participating in grants, really understanding that. If Michael or Jackie wanna share any of those kind of.
Well, the, the grant that you guys will hear about, and it's because it went through a ballot measure statewide, is Proposition 123. Uh, it was approved in 2022 on the ballot. And so that is a state, there's a, there was a state set aside every year for affordable housing now. And unfortunately, with state deficits and the federal, what's going on there? Really, that is the fund that everyone now is going to, right? And the criteria around that is 100% AMI for homeownership or 60% or less for rentals. There is a petition process which, which I believe you guys have already undergone to raise the homeownership to 120. And that's a case-by-case scenario on each project.
And what do we get from Prop 123 if, if we have a knowledgeable project?
Seventy-seven thousand a unit. Is that right? Is that the current amount?
I thought it was seventy, so.
It might be seventy, sorry.
Yeah, so for our housing at 10-200 project, what we're finding is with the buyers that have applied for the lottery, um, there, we have quite a few that are under 100% AMI, so they're local workforce, um, you know, firefighters, sheriff's department, school district. While they can qualify for a mortgage, it's not at 30% of their income. And so it's, the map that I was doing today is probably a little skewed, but just trying to, you know, estimate what home orders would be for them, closer to 45, 48% of their income. So we might be looking at Prop 123 to soften that a little bit for these buyers so they can actually afford to buy these units, because we need to put somebody into something we can't afford to buy.
So Prop 123 helps with their down payment, contributes to get down payment, so.
So Prop 123 is a literal gap financing tool.
Right.
So what we do is, as the local government, wanna help Jackie with, is we actually, so we actually show what we're, what we're having on our final price, even with all the tap fees and all the other deferrals we've got. And to Jackie's point, when we actually first submitted, they actually denied our letter of interest because our AM, our price point was at 800% AMI.
Right.
But what we found through doing the lottery is so many of our buyers are below 100% and actually even below 80, that we're gonna go back and petition them and say, hey, we have a lot of buyers, of our 17 buyers, I think 12 of them would qualify or don't qualify for that 100% AMI price at 30% of their income. So can we leverage some additional true gap financing? And so they actually come in with a check at, at the construction things. Um, so in that three-step development process at stage two, they come in with that 70,000 a unit. And it's up to, sorry, I wanna be real clear, it's up to 70,000.
You're encouraged not to ask for that.
Yeah, right, right, right. Well, I mean, the, we, you know, you'll be a lot more, again, where, what, what we're trying to do is to be at like a 40 to 50,000 dollar a unit ask.
Right.
Versus a full seven. But again, we have buyers that are over 100%, so any of those buyers wouldn't get the gap, the gap money. But, um, but that's really.
But that offsets a lot of construction costs, that's good.
Yeah.
We, we have a lot of subsidy going into this project, and even so, it's still, you know, we're not, we're not there. And so it's, it's really frustrating to see this happening. And when we opted in to Prop 123, so that meant that we had to agree to build 24 affordable units over a three-year period. Unfortunately, because these units are not at that 30% of their income, they don't qualify. So we have this enormous subsidy going into this project and these units would not be counted for that commitment that we had pledged to. So there, there's, it's, it's a, it's a wild game.
Well, and we have, what is it, almost 2.8 million in subsidies so far?
Three, 3.5.
3.5 million, and we're still not hitting the affordability, right? So, and I mean, it's not, and we've been, again, we've, we've gotten all the subdivision approvals, we have all the utilities in there now. We added the one kind of black sheep that I don't normally see that you guys have here is a California Superfund site. So that added hundreds of thousands of additional costs that we typically wouldn't have.
Right.
But just construction costs and affordability. And the other thing that's really depressing right now is interest rates. That it's really, really added a lot of extra costs, so.
Well, and now potentially the just building materials cost, we're about to go through.
Yeah.
So I, I have a quick question. Would the, the 10-200 that you're referencing is, is that, was that foreseeable or?
Yeah.
And what would, what could have been done differently to avoid where you're at with that now, I guess?
I mean, we're, the, the unforeseen thing, I think, when we originally started, which was in 2022, was interest rates. So the interest rates, I think, actually when we originally applied, was four and a half percent.
Phenomenally low, yeah.
And so that is, that's probably the number one thing that was unforeseen. But I will tell you that the costs for the infrastructure and for the subdivision and surveying, I mean, we are pretty much spot on budget. So all of our anticipated horizontal costs, um, the only issue we have right now is there's a lot of concern, and so these are modular coming out of Monville. Yeah, there, there's a lot of this going on with tariffs. And so there's this 25% is gonna hit our order or not. And so I, I'm actually going tomorrow to the modular manufacturer and sitting down with their, their purchasing team, talk about tariffs.
Tap fees did go up.
Oh, yeah.
Tap fees, really.
We had a $350,000 increase in tap fees.
Is there any control that can be had? I know that there are independent agencies, but water and sanitation both.
So we were very fortunate. Rockwell Water was a wonderful partner in this project. And, um, you know, we talked early on about consideration and they came back and lowered their cap fees from 12,000 to 7,000, which was fantastic.
Okay.
Um, Monville sanitation doubled theirs.
Right. More than made up for our savings, yeah. No, and we continue to see that. Is there any? How do you, how do you manage that?
So.
Especially in a small place like ours.
So here's the, here's the issue. I'm gonna put people on the stage just a little bit. So your two districts are, they're enterprise funds, right? They're under, they're under a statutory environment where they actually operate as a business and they don't, they're not subject to labor. But that means that they can't, they can't take on, they can only take, I think it's five or 10% of their total debt service can only be grants. And that really is the problem. And then, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but the state has been its own worst enemy around affordable housing, especially as it relates to water quality discharge. So the, the discharge standards, and again, to, to kind of, I know everyone in the same district gets a fake, is a big bad wolf all the time. But they're, they're reacting and their requirements to build a new facility are coming because of CDH, CDPHG, the EPA. Sorry, uh, requirements for discharge. And so.
Right.
They had a plan that's outdated, that they're having to now rebuild, and the cost of that, tap fees go.
So the tap fees in this case were just a product of that timing? Is that how you're explaining it?
We were talking about, you know, this project for a while, and by the time it came to actually do it, I mean, that was the consequence.
They knew that the new water thing had to be on, okay.
So, so like what Michael says, you know, it's, it's hard to build affordable housing by committee employees and just trying to get, you know, everybody aligned and moving forward and.
Yeah, like, right when we thought we got there, Jackie was like, oh, by the way, it's 350,000 more in tap fees. I'm like, ah! But Jackie did a great job. She had, she was able to, we were able to say.
That's really frustrating.
We were able to actually, you know, do Jackie's, kudos to Jackie, because she took that, she went to the state, and the state actually gave us that additional funding.
Gotcha. Thanks for that explanation.
So just, I, I know that they get a bad rap, but I will say that they're, they're operating under a statute, statute that requires them to have those fees to generate revenue to build this new plant that's gonna be required to by stat, by regulation. So I know it's, but the other thing is you guys have a lot of small packaging plants all around the county that are also facing the same increased requirements for discharge, so something to pay attention to.
And does the same thing happen for things like insurance premiums changing nationwide? That then become a problem for homeownership?
So the, the other, the other thing, the other part of what we're dealing with is actually a lot of the fallout from, you know, we're, we're, that's kind of the next phrase for impact. What we're waiting on is the new insurance rates of the big disasters out of California and seeing, I mean, we had, I think in our original pro forma, we had a hundred dollars a month budgeted for insurance. So, yeah, it's.
Pretty much everything that could go sideways, timing-wise has gone sideways. I mean, every different aspect of it.
Every single thing.
Yeah. And, and continues to, it continues to change. That's tough. There's no way to plan for this, as, as, as the county is seeing, time and time again over the last three or four years.
But I will, again, just go back to the strategies, owning the land asset.
That's really the key, yeah.
Giving you the flexibility. So when you're negotiating and when you're looking at your, your, your five tools here with a developer, really having, you know, deed restriction units and, and getting the, getting that as part of the the agreement early on, like an inclusionary zoning piece of property. Because the issue is developers are gonna move a lot faster than the programs are gonna move. So the developer being able to say, here's a set aside, you guys go ahead and you figure it out, is really the, honestly, the only model that I ever see work. So unless it's a, again, unless it's a heavily sensitized, like, type of project. So.
So, you know, our recent entitlement that we got a volunteer, or it'd be through this PUD amendment that we did in working through our planning grant, and we amended PUD was, you know, we ended up with an 11% commitment from the most recent PUD subdivision that just came through. So, um, you know, that's it, working in real time, but working with a developer who can bring these units online. So it's a real win, a win to do that. But it takes so many tools and coming at it from so many directions. And I think it's completely appropriate to do a big thank you to our dedicated staff that comes in every day with a positive attitude, even though, um, she just needs a bulletproof vest, I think. But there's always something coming at her, but she always comes up with a new plan. And, um, and it's great that everybody at DOLA loves her and they're always willing to give her a little extra money.
Thank you, Jackie.
Because she, she bakes them cookies and.
Whatever it takes.
And gives them hugs and, and is, and she has them on speed dial, so. Um, and then you, you know, just even at the Rocky Mountain Land Use Institute Conference, it, it is always, um, we're always mentioned for the amazing work that we're doing. The APA has highlighted Jackie and her work and asked her to speak, um, at different events because of her tenacity and what she's been able to achieve. So, you know, we've got a powerhouse locally, we really do, so.
And we've been so fortunate because we've had Michael and his expertise and guidance helping us through this because this is, I mean, it's a landmark, it's hard to navigate, and.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna get there.
Absolutely.
You guys are gonna stay married.
And that's, that's where the peace, you don't let Michael get too far away.
And then one other quick question. You said most of the projects are 30 years or? It, would it be an incentive to the developer to draw it out 40 years or something like that, typical?
So when I say that most of the projects are 30 years, most of the funders.
Yeah.
Require 30 years. So your DOLA, your CHAFA, or your HUD are 30-year terms. So that's what I meant.
Traditional, conventional, yeah.
So any of your, the funders, like the housing funders, they look to a minimum, they consider long-term affordability in 30 years. Our current deed restriction on housing at 10-200 is in perpetuity. Never goes back.
Okay.
So you can require, so again, a question.
I'm just saying, when you talk about interest rates, it go into 40-year to ease.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah. Um, there, there are, so our down payment assistance is a five-year on the back of a 30.
True.
So yes, so that's for example, yeah, we actually had, another thing that Jackie was able to do was secure down payment assistance for anybody under 100% AMI have another $25,000 of down payment.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had dumped the toolbox on the ground. We're looking for screws that didn't fall out right now. So, yeah. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from, I'm sorry, jumping in there, just, just to make sure there wasn't anybody um, on Zoom that had a question for Michael or Jackie, um, before we close out this session?
I have a quick question. This is Ryan Hill. Hey, guys.
Hey, Ryan.
Um, when you guys are doing feasibility, I, is that something that is done annually, quarterly, semi-annually? How is that done?
So when you talk about feasibility, are you talking about the market demand piece of the feasibility or are you talking about the actual, uh, cost of the project?
Market demand.
Yeah, so market demand, so every five years, six years, the state requires what's called a housing needs assessment. So your new, um, needs assessment is on the website. So if you haven't looked at it, it just came out. I would strongly recommend, take a little hard look at it. It actually, it's kind of enlightening, scary on how much your rental prices have jumped in last five years and housing costs have jumped. It's, it's, uh, you guys are now in what I call the land of the resort communities, which is not a place you ever wanted to be. So that's what your new needs assessment says. But then every project that comes in, we, again, we're kind of benefiting, there's about a, there's about a six-month to 18-month window that these funders will allow a needs assessment to backfill a market demand study. But any kind of project that's really, especially like a light tech project, actually goes and does their own feasibility study. And a market feasibility, so, and just to, um, Ryan, just so you understand this, a market feasibility study costs between about five grand and 15 grand, depending on the size of the project. A housing needs assessment is about $150,000. So there's a huge difference in that cost and the level which the study looks at. Because the housing needs assessment really dives into, and what's really interesting about that study is it has a lot of survey data where the actual preparer, the sur, preparer of the report actually goes and calls individual locals, calls and finds out on-the-ground details. Whereas a market study just looks at. Whereas a market study just looks at, this project's running at this price, there's this many units on the M L S for a for sale. So it's really looking at market conditions versus an in-depth, like, sociological study of why so many things have changed.
Got it, super helpful, and you said the additional resources were where again?
So there, so you'll get on the last, second to last slide of this presentation that you'll get as an email, there's two hyperlinks that you can click on.
Fantastic, thank you.
It's also on the website now.
Yep, the housing needs assessment, the new rules around housing needs assessment is every six years. In addition, we will also have to create a housing action plan. So that's going to be coming up as a requirement. And so we can turn in our housing needs assessment to DOLA, and they can start reviewing it to make sure that it contains the elements that are required in the housing needs assessment, because this isn't ruling. Interesting enough, though, I did the legislative update, again, at the conference I just got back from. And we use Root Policy, and we're a good company. The other four panelists that were talking about their housing needs, three of the four also use Root Policy. So Littleton, Inglewood, Summit County, that's some of the reasons we chose them. It went through a competitive process to choose, but Root Policy is well known throughout the state for their work in preparing these housing needs studies. So I think that we probably have a very workable study. And the other thing I would mention is that we did a training, Jackie did a training with the Board of County Commissioners. And so we have a reporting of the consultant Root Policy going through and giving a overview of the housing needs assessment. So we might look for that YouTube video and see if we can get it out to the planning commission. Because I think it, you know, as we were sitting here, I thought, gosh, it would be really great to have had Root Policy hiding. Um, you know, present to the planning commission. But we do have that recorded when they did it for the Board of County Commissioners. And so when we get the slide deck, maybe we can also, and also she's like, oh, my gosh, you know, one more thing we said over there. So maybe look for that YouTube video from when we did the update for the board, because I think you'll find it really interesting. And just even our demographic information and how our population is changing, what our needs locally all look like, might be a little surprising to you. So we'll, we'll get that and see if we can get that recording out for you.
And then the needs assessment, the beginning of it, she has her slide deck, and it's, it's got some really, like I'm saying, very fascinating statistics about how our population hasn't changed much, but then for effort has changed tremendously, so.
I've been studying you guys since twenty twenty-two, and I almost fell off my chair when I saw the slide on how much the, I think. The gentrification piece of your community momentum on that is, what was it, in two thousand nineteen? It really just.
Oh, yeah.
So.
So that's, that's a very good defense.
Yeah, but is, it puts it in a quantifiable?
Is A M I refactored every year?
Yes, and it's done at a federal level, which, by county, so every county across America has an A M I search.
But it is done annually. Okay, it's, it seems like everything is based on that, so.
It actually comes out in April.
Okay, so, so the numbers that we saw today will be updated next month?
It's going to be real, there's a lot of talk about wondering why they're finally going to start to go down again. Because I have a lot of communities, I'd say sixty-six nine is not our, it's not our teachers, it's not our workforce.
Right.
But there's, again, it's the whole workforce, so you have a lot of telecommuters that have moved here, that are really jacking it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
As far as the policy. But yeah, great information, and I, and some resources that I think the commission really needs to have. Especially as you're getting ready, again, to do one of your biggest projects that you do as a planning commission and as the cop plan. So this information is really going to be helpful to get really a pulse of where we are at currently. And thanks to the efforts that have gone into this work, we've got really great timely information to help guide you. So we'll get those resources out to you.
Very good, anybody online with any further questions?
No questions here.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
I just want to say, this has been one of my favorite presentations so far.
Very informative, yes.
Awesome. Well, that's great, and it. Six twenty-four, five twenty, five twenty-four, we will adjourn, thanks, everybody.
Oh, is the last thing?
Yep.
I thought, I thought you guys had done a bunch of this, so I'll try to.
No, because we, you know, you are.
You were it today.
Just letting us get out a little early, so.
So what's the chance of that, bringing back the B O C C?
It's a hundred percent.
We're going to have to, because they want here.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, we will. We were trying to.